Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all so much for joining us. For those who are live with us on Facebook, my name is John Reed. I am the editor of the PW Perspective. And you can see us at www.pwperspective.com. And we want to introduce everyone here tonight to two incredible people. And just, and you know, we know as we're getting ready to go into the school year, starting on August 25th. And with everything that happened since the middle of March with the global pandemic, and there's been a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. And even in some cases, some anxiety for parents, for students, for teachers and staff, as to how things are going to go. And so tonight, we're joined with me are two great people who are going to help just ease some of that concerns and answer some of your questions. We're going to do an introduction into Canvas and also answer some of the administrative questions. So that when the day starts on August 25th, parents, students, teachers and staff will be all ready to begin another excellent school year. Joining me first and foremost is the vice chairwoman of the Prince William County School Board in Woodbridge District, and a good friend of mine, Ms. Lori Williams. Ms. Williams, how are you tonight?
I'm well. How are you, John? Thank you for having me on here again. It's truly an honor to be able to share this experience with your viewers and be on your program.
Thank you so much. And also joining me, who's going to introduce us to the Canvas program, is a teacher from Freedom High School, Mr. J.K. Akbar. Mr. Akbar, thank you so much for joining us tonight. How are you doing, sir?
Doing well. How are you?
Doing well. And so we want to go ahead and go right into it. And again, for those who are joining us on Facebook Live, we sincerely appreciate your time taking us to join us on this Friday night. And so let's talk a bit more about the Canvas program. So, Mr. Akbar, if you could just talk a little bit about what that program entails and how imperative it is for teachers and students to get used to it as we get ready for August 25th.
Sure. So Canvas is something that's not necessarily new to the county. It's something that our dual enrollment classes have already been using. But for the majority of us, teachers and students and parents especially, it's going to be something that is a little bit new. But I know that I speak for many teachers that we're excited about it. I know that it's going to make our interactions with students a lot easier as well. So I'm excited for people to get to know it a little bit better and so grateful for programs like this that are offering that opportunity to our families. So Canvas basically is a learning management system. What that means is that's kind of your like one-stop shop for virtual education. And a lot of colleges and universities that are not 100% virtual are still using Canvas because it supplements what happens in a classroom. So I imagine that once we do go back into the classroom, we'll still be using Canvas as kind of the place where we hold our files or where students can go to do that independent-paced supplementary education than what happens in the classroom. So that's essentially what Canvas is. There's a lot of information out there because there's tons of school systems that already use Canvas. It's something that's tried and tested. So for us, I'm going to share my screen really quickly so that we can kind of share it and get really right into it, how students are going to be able to access Canvas and how parents can also be a part of it.
All right. Wonderful. And so, Mr. Akbar is just preparing for that. And Ms. Williams, just wanted to go to you just real quickly and on behalf of the school board, and some of the things that you have to go through in preparation to get those students and staff ready for the beginning of the school year. So what are some things that they can do now as they get ready to begin?
Sure. Well, I highly recommend going to our FAQ page on the Prince William County Schools website, learning all about where we are in the planning stages, the startup stages, learning how to access your student's Canvas account and to access your parent Canvas account. And really just kind of getting in there and playing around and seeing how it works and getting yourself familiarized with it. A lot of students, you can go in now and link your parent account if you have your student access code, which can be found under your student's Canvas page. So there's detailed instructions on how to do that on our FAQs. There's a host of YouTube videos that also run through it. And there's been a few people who are like me, I'm like a Facebook woman. So there was a really well-done demonstration on Prince William County Moms, the Facebook page, and it is still up there. So parents can go up there and utilize that video or the divisions Canvas video, which is on our FAQ page. Or if you type in Google, YouTube, Canvas, Prince William County Schools, it'll pop up as well.
All right. Wonderful. And for those who are watching this information, and we definitely have this video recorded and placed on our PW Perspective Facebook page, so you'll be able to go back and review that. So you'll be able to have access to the links and be able to take the time to study it in preparation for the school year.
One thing I want to add too, is I think it's really imperative for parents, and we do this a lot in my household, and it seems to have worked, and a couple of my friends do it as well. So it's good to start practicing your routine. So we usually start, I have a young one now, a second grader, so we're getting ready to start our routine practice next week because we need a little bit more time with our younger one. I used to do it about two weeks out from my high schooler, same about from middle school age, which is readjusting bedtimes, making sure we're up, even though we're not technically in school, but getting up and getting used to that routine. So when school does start, you don't have to try to reinvent that wheel. You're already, your body's kind of used to and acclimated getting up at a certain time and practicing certain things. And so that's what we're doing here in my house. And I highly encourage parents, you know, if you have a dedicated space, that's great. If you don't, but you know maybe you're going to Mondays and Wednesdays sit at the kitchen table, and Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're going to sit on the front porch, whatever works best for you and your family, just sort of mimicking that routine all the way through so that your student and yourself, if you're a work-from-home parent, or whoever's going to be there, if needed, be with your little one. So you're used to an acclimated sitting in front of a computer, having what it feels like to sit in that space, making sure you can do like little dry run-throughs. You have pen and paper and things of that nature. So you're not kind of scrambling on the first day of school. So I always like to leave that with parents, too. I think it's really helpful advice.
Absolutely. And one thing as well is that yourself and Coles District School Supervisor Lisa Dackenpor have been doing presentations for Canvas, as you so believe. Is that correct?
That is. We've done a few with some of our very nice ITC, which is our Information Technology Coordinators from the school system, school division. They were very nice to volunteer their time off-contract to do them with us. And Mr. Akbar actually joined us for one as well. So where anybody who wants to volunteer to do run-throughs with us to help get our Prince William County families more acclimated and prepared to the new school year and as it starts, we're welcome to it. And I do want to let parents know, it is really, really important that you sign up, have your ParentView, which is otherwise called the Hub, account, ready to go. If you don't, and if you have not signed up, please reach out to your student's school. They'll get you the information you need to get that signed up. It comes on an app. You can log in on a computer. It's a cloud-based program. And really spend the time to learn Canvas because it's going to be here to stay. So we're going to continue to use it well after our students are back in the building.
Absolutely. And speaking of that, this is a great opportunity for those who may not have ever seen it before, to take a look at it. And so we're basically having Canvas 101. And Mr. Akbar, go to you. And so if you could just give us an introduction, what is it going to look like on the very first day when someone goes in and how they can get acclimated to the system?
Sure. So we hope that the first day is not the first time that they are going to go into the system. And there's, just like Ms. Williams was mentioning, there are some amazing videos and resources already out there, especially from this group that ITC's for all, that have been completely volunteer-based. It's a group of ITC's from different schools that have just gotten together and put up this amazing, amazing website. They're on Twitter. They have a YouTube channel and they're just fantastic with their videos. So if you want to get more information, I just want to show you that it's pretty easy. You just go onto Google, you type in PWCS and Canvas. And once you've searched PWCS Canvas, you'll actually get the Prince William County result right on the top, which tells you about Canvas and Zoom. And so it's very easy for parents to be able to get that and access that information. Similarly, if you go onto YouTube, sorry, my internet's clearly not the fastest currently. But similarly, if you go onto YouTube and you type in PWCS Canvas, the first result that I'm getting here is Canvas for Prince William County Parents. And so it's absolutely amazing resources by this group, ITC's for all, that have been doing that. Also, Prince William County Schools has put out some stuff as well. So there's no lack of information there. But hopefully I can share some stuff with you today that'll also be relevant. The way you access Canvas for students is going to be through that Waffle, or what they call the Waffle. Sorry. Let's go up. Through what we call the Waffle on the Microsoft Office 365. So that's the Waffle right there. And so if you go, you'll see that there's a link for Canvas. That's where teachers and students can access it. Again, if parents want to access it, you can just go to the Prince William County website and type in Canvas and access the parent version from there. Once you log into Canvas, you are greeted by what's called your dashboard. So what students will see is their various courses that the county is going to put out for everyone. So whatever your schedule looks like, you'll have the appropriate classes that go with it on your dashboard. You'll get the basic information such as a course name. Depending on whatever notifications the course instructor has put on, you might see some little icons over here. Those icons can be for notifications or announcements. They can be for files. They can be for discussions that are happening in the group. So this is a course that the county actually created or Canvas created and then the county adapted for Canvas training for teachers. So I'm just going to walk you through that, and that's what students will see. So if I click on my course, it's going to take me to the homepage for that course. The county is trying to streamline this, or at least schools are trying to streamline this based on their level, where there's a similar template that the students will see for each one of their classes. One of the biggest things about Canvas is that before, in the spring, teachers were using whatever learning management system that they already had in place. So that could have been Edmodo, that could have been Microsoft Teams, that could have been a Google Classroom, so a host of different things. And students and parents kind of had to get used to all of that technology. Here, we're streamlining it by putting in one, you know, one system. So you're greeted by this homepage, which essentially will be the information that a teacher thinks is relevant for students to see right away. That might be their contact information, that might be an About Me section, or that might just help you navigate through all of the different course, all of the different course materials that you have. In this case, it was a training module that we had. And so you can see that they have links to the various different modules. And modules can be translated into essentially units that we have in a physical classroom. So Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3. Teachers can set those up as modules. That's also something that we'll be getting from the county and we'll be supplementing as teachers. On the left-hand side over here, you can see that there's various different links. There's course announcements that the teacher might put out. Modules, what I was just mentioning, grades. One of the best things is that you can submit assignments straight through Canvas. And they'll be linked in with what we call the Hub or students call Student View or Parent View. So grades will be automatically uploaded onto that. So it fits into the systems that we already have. There's various other items that we have here. Collaborations, which allows students to work together with one another. So during that live instruction period that we'll still be having for every single class, teachers can still be using Canvas, having a Zoom discussion and saying, "Okay, from now, what we're going to do is for the next 15 minutes, I want you guys to collaborate in groups." And I can set them into groups right through Canvas as well. And they'll know where they're being assigned to. They have access to their Microsoft Office 365 documents over here as well. And then we also have things that teachers might have been using before, such as NearPod, which is just this amazing, amazing platform that I encourage everyone to kind of look into, to factor it right into Canvas. So basically, there's a lot of information already available out there, so I don't want to repeat some of those things. But basically, this is where students will be doing most of their work independently as well as, you know, through their class instruction. So just to click on one of the modules, for example, you can see the various different titles that the pages have. So instead of introduction, I'm going to go to one that actually has some more content.
All right. Good. All right.
So the first page that you'll have usually in a module is something that's going to be explaining what the instructions are for that module. So it'll be the notes. "I'm a French teacher, so this is where I would introduce kind of the grammar concepts or the vocabulary or the theme of the unit." And then students can essentially click through it at their own pace. They can also be locked. So we all have, well, I'm the only teacher here, but we have students in our classes that will like to jump through and do what they're interested in first before kind of doing the legwork that they might have to put into it. We can actually, through Canvas, lock those and require prerequisites. So the students are actually going through the appropriate platform. Yeah, it's absolutely amazing also videos. So if you assign videos for students to watch, it's not where they're just going to click through it and say, "Hey, I did it," and just go for the answers. I can actually get feedback analytics to see how much time did the student spend on the video, where they stopped watching it. They can put in their comments in that video as well. So if they have a question at marker 2 minutes and 15 seconds, they can put a comment there. Or I can put a comment there asking a question that they have to respond to in another assignment. So really just allows us to do so much. I know that teachers are really excited about it. Many teachers are already on Facebook or on social media or through their independent groups are getting together to come up with best practices, ideas, get their classrooms ready, just the same way that we'd be getting them physically ready. We're putting that same energy and directing it towards here. So it's really something that we're trying to make the best of this situation. So you'll see, just on this module, you can have a video inserted. You can have information inserted. And then what we'll get to next is where it'll have like an assignment for me. So I can just be flipping through these pages. Let me get to an actual assignment. So it has to do, it tells me exactly what it wants me to do. And then I can go on to an assignment. Let's see. Just keep going through pages. Let me get to an actual assignment.
And for those who are just joining us, we're here with Vice Chairwoman Lori Williams of the Prince William County School Board and J.K. Akbar of Freedom High School, who's giving us a presentation on the Canvas program, which students and faculty will be using for the upcoming school year here in Prince William County.
Great. So when I was talking about submitting an assignment, so you'll see that just as I was clicking through the pages of the module, I came to a page that has what it says, "This is an assignment." You can tell when you look at the calendar. And I'll get to that calendar next. I think it's a super important and interesting aspect of Canvas. So it tells me, it gives me a rubric for what the assignment's going to be graded on. And it's also going to give me the option to submit it right here online. So I can attach a document to it or fill in a document if it's been provided by a teacher. You can also continue like this, and there'll be quizzes, et cetera. And I was talking about the calendar and this assignment mentioned it as well. The calendar is something that's superb because it synchronizes all of your classes together and puts them onto one virtual calendar. That you can also link into your, if you have an Apple calendar on your phone or a Google calendar, you can also kind of join those together. But you can see that on your calendar, this is just one fake assignment that I have, but you'll have all of your various assignments or meetings that you have that will be on here. So those students that have a little bit of trouble tracking what they need to do, or those parents that want to see what their student has coming up so they can assist them with that, this will definitely be something that's beneficial. I'm seeing this for my students that have an individualized education plan. Then especially, this can be one of the goals to see, you know, are they following what's on their calendars? To really help keep them streamlined because virtual education comes with its own challenges, of course.
Yes.
So essentially, this is where we can communicate with one another, teachers and students and students with one another. This is somewhere where we can submit assignments, have quizzes, or use it as a launchpad. Even if there is something that needs to be done outside of Canvas, it can be the launchpad for those instructions. So, I mean, I think that's a basic overview. Just to mention the parent side, again, if you go onto YouTube and type in PWCS Canvas, the first video is going to be for parents. And that tells you how to be able to, as Ms. Williams was mentioning, how to link up your account with your student's account. And what you'll see is essentially what the student will see as well. So you'll get to see what assignments they have coming up. You'll see what's on their calendar. You'll see the communication between the student and their teacher. And you'll see their grade information as well. So that allows a lens that hasn't existed before in this county for parents, which is just, you know, amazing for parents to feel included in their child's education and to feel like they're coming from a more knowledgeable standpoint when they go into parent-teacher conferences. And Zoom will also be figured right into this. So Zoom has, just like I was showing you the little app icons, Zoom's included in there as well. So when we do instruction meetings, students have one place to go to click on those.
Oh, that's great. And let me just go back to something you talked about earlier, and I'd like to just open up the floor for both of you. Thank you so much for that great presentation, Mr. Akbar. Let's talk about the collaboration. And you mentioned how you have these programs where students can come together and they can talk and getting group assignments. Now, is this, I assume there's also for teachers as well, who if they want to have their own means of collaboration, this is a tool they would use to talk with one another or talk with other levels of administration?
Absolutely. So this is something that schools have already done. They've created what we have CLTs, which are essentially our collaboration units between teachers of the same course or of the same level. We've already created those courses in Canvas so teachers can collaborate with one another through that course as well, kind of make common materials. The same goes for various clubs. I know that this can be used for a student assembly, for example, for students and their sponsor to coordinate with one another. Just because we can't physically be in a school doesn't mean that all of those ideas and those activities have to wait and be on hold. We can definitely do a lot with this.
Absolutely. And I just want to bring up just a couple of questions as far as, you know, making sure that it's safe. And a couple of questions that parents have brought to me. And no, like we talked about earlier, is we saw what happened in Fairfax County and you know, some of the programs being hacked. And so Vice Chairwoman, so what can to just give parents assurance that they will not experience the same issues of hacking and make sure that it's secure here in comparison when they use this Canvas program?
Sure. Well, as Mr. Akbar mentioned earlier, Canvas has been used, it's been around for a really long time. So it's new to Prince William County Schools in general for most of our general education students, but it's used by Northern Virginia Community College, a lot of universities and colleges throughout the United States. So it's a very secure program. Another thing to note is that Prince William County Schools purchased a Zoom license. So in the spring, you know, it was individual accounts being used by teachers. We decided it was really important that we had a license to sort of prevent those Zoom bombing instances that we were seeing across the news. So that, we've done everything that we possibly can to be as secure and safe as we possibly can for our students. And there's other things that we do as a division, right? So our elementary school kids don't, students, excuse me, don't have email, right? And that's because we don't want students, and I think it's really elementary and some middle school. So under a certain age group, we don't, we don't want students to have to feel responsible for all the things that go into having personal emails and what that means for your family's internet safety. So we've built in things. So Canvas for a high school student is going to look a little bit different than a middle school student and an elementary school student as far as what types of things you'll find in the modules, how teachers are asking them to interact. It's going to be modified per grade level, per grade and by subject. So what Mr. Akbar showed is the basic format for Canvas, which everybody will see. But maybe, let's say if you had a first grader, you might find a lot more videos or things that, I know we use iXL as a math program, K through 12, right? But your levels of iXL, you're going to be able to one-click into iXL. Of course, it's going to look like iXL for an elementary schooler if you have one, middle school, so on and so on. Maybe there's like a reading program that's specific to elementary. You'd see, your elementary school student would see that where your middle or your high school student wouldn't. So all of those things are going to be one-stop shopping. And I can't tell you how excited I am as a parent and as a school board member because I spent a couple of years going, can I please stop going 100 places to try to figure out what my student is doing and when he's doing it? And then having one that just graduated and one that just started, I can 100% testify to, and I was that student as well, like, what did I do with my paper? Oh my God, I forgot to write it down. I think it's in my locker, maybe. I don't know. That was me. So I'm very excited to be able to, A, as a parent, go one place and see what my student is doing. I'm very excited for my students who, well, my youngest now, who'll be able to sort of learn the agenda protocols that you need that follow your life and in a system that we all use. Most of corporate America uses Microsoft Office and Microsoft Programming. So in a way, we're starting off our kids with our, with good digital citizenship skills right from the beginning. And it's incorporated into a program that they may also end up using as they matriculate through and make decisions to go off to college or university, especially if they're going to Northern Virginia Community College. So I think the advantages are amazing for us.
Absolutely. And just looking at the program and, let's say, looking at its user-friendly format, that it will allow both parents, teachers and students be able to use it in a way that it'll be, it'll be community-based, that everyone will be able to look at the information and it will help maintain, like you talked about earlier. You know, we, we came from an era of lockers. And if it wasn't in the locker, you know, paper, it was gone. And so we couldn't find it on a cloud of computers. But also, I wanted to ask this and open the question for both of you, is talk about for parents who may, who may be the parent of a special needs child, and what is being done to ensure that when the school year starts that they are able to maintain their current pace for the school year?
Sure. So we are working really diligently for all of our special needs population. All of our IEPs are being rewritten currently with the expectation that they'll be finished on September 8th. And based upon the IEP outcome, we're going to do our best to provide services that are needed and specified in the IEP. And it's going to be, it's really so individualized. I can't get into the details specifically. It's different for each child, but we're going to do our best. And we know from our summer program, right, that we've had some students who fall into special education needs, that they were serviced. We had relatively, this is the first year, as my six years on the school board, where I did not receive a whole bunch of, oh my goodness, what is going on with summer school? The first week of summer school. I heard, oh my goodness, this is awesome. Did you know? My first grader can use this. I had no idea. I almost looked at, checked my phone a couple of times, like, where's the emails that my kid got? What happened? And we also had great success with our ELL Summer Academy, too. So our English and Second Language learners, we had around a 90% participation rate every single day and a success at the end of the camp. So we're seeing a lot of our English Second Languages, we're getting that data that says we can utilize Canvas, we can do digital teaching for our English and Second Language learners as well. Now, I say that with the caveat that not every single ELL student is going to fall into that category. Again, we're making sure that we are able to provide the services that they need to our most, absolute most vulnerable population. And that's just defined by their IEP.
Absolutely. Again, for those who are joining us on Facebook Live, thank you so much. We are joined by Vice Chairwoman Lori Williams and Mr. J.K. Akbar of Freedom, a teacher at Freedom High School. And so, as you just talked about, you know, some of the disadvantaged students. And so, and I know recently there was an approval to make sure that $5 million was allocated, you know, for helping with school supplies and what have you. And so, talk about the access to Canvas. And maybe if you're able to, either one of you are able to speak on this, is how is this technology being able to be reached to lower-income students? So to make sure that everybody has access to the Canvas program?
Right. Well, from board member perspective level, I can tell you that we're working really hard to ensure that if students need a device to, for their learning, they should reach out to their school and we will be able to provide some type of device to them. The plan was to provide all high school students with new devices this year, which is what most of that $5 million funding is going towards, is to ensure that high school students have new devices. We are utilizing the devices the division currently has to pass out to those families that don't have them. So definitely reach out to your school, your students assigned school, and we will get a device to you so that your student can participate in the school year as we did in the spring. So we know we can do it, but the parents need to let us know. That was also part of the question in the Return to Learn survey. But I also know that, right, we have a lot of families that maybe didn't have ParentView or still don't know that. So it's really important, if you have questions, always, always contact your student's school. There are people there who'll be able to answer it. I think right now, until the 17th, when teacher contracts begin, the preferred method is email. But recognizing that everyone doesn't have access to email, you know, give your schools a call. We want to make sure that everybody has a device if they need one. We also have programs like Virginia Star that work with our school division throughout the year and hand out free computers to our most needy families. And they do that in around Robin throughout our whole entire division, school division. And that is a statewide program that Prince William is very proud of because it was started right here in Prince William County at Forest Park High School. So another great aspect of Prince William County Schools that now has gone statewide for everyone's use. And then to follow up on that, Comcast is working with our Prince William County families as well. So if you qualify for SNAP, free and reduced lunch, other assistance programs, you should, you should reach out to Comcast. They have a special program right now for eligible families. So there's either free or reduced cost internet. I know one of their programs that they're doing is like $9, $9.95 plus tax a month for students who earn free and reduced lunch. And they'll walk you through it. It's a really good program. I know a couple of families that have qualified for it. And I would encourage you to call, right? So I know we have some families, I, I know I've been in this position before where I got a bill. I didn't pay it. And now I'm all like, oh, I need internet. And I can't call them because I owe them some money. Call them. They will work with you. There, there are different levels to this program. Please don't let that stand in your way from making these phone calls.
Absolutely. And thank you for that, Vice Chairwoman. And talk about that because we, we know in this global pandemic situation, we know a lot of families are going through financial challenges. And in some instances, we know we have some parents who, for certain reasons, simply cannot be at home all the time because they do have to work. It may be essential personnel. Talk about for just a moment to the parents who, and parents we've talked to and others who they say, you know, I don't know if I'd be able to be there every day for my child. If there's something that is being done to just, you know, ease their concerns that their child is going to continue to get the education that they need, what do you say to those parents?
So what I say to them is, I try to tell everybody, look, I'm not a teacher. We have one online. He's fantastic. And I am grateful for, for our teaching staff and for people like Mr. Akbar, who really step up and do the job needed to do, to educate our students. That is not me. I'm not a teacher. And my oldest son can tell you, he'd rather run than have me teach him something. So I want to, I want our parents to understand that we're not asking you to teach your children. We're asking you to partner with us to, to get your child educated. The teachers are working. They are working really hard. You know, a lot of them are volunteering their time right now before their teacher contract even starts to be prepared for the school year. And the really neat thing about Canvas, to me as a parent, and Mr. Akbar, you can kind of expand on this a little bit, is that we have made sure that we are going to have pre-recorded lessons in there so that your student can go back and watch a lesson that was done at an earlier date and time, which for me, that would be really helpful. Like, say, as, I'm a single mom, so my, my son, who is a rising second grader, decides to spend, I use this example, he's going to kill me in 20 years, decides to spend 100 hours in the bathroom singing to himself while using the bathroom, which is very typical of little kids. Can't get him signed onto the Zoom at the right time. Oh, my gosh, I'm panic, panic mom. I can go back into his Canvas account. I can watch the lesson that was presented at a later date. So it's not the same, right, as having a teacher right there in front of you answering questions, walking through. But it's still a lesson that he needed, that he needed to see that he missed. And I can go back and message the teacher at a later, at a later, at a later date too, if I have questions. I'm not a math expert. If they're doing something in math I don't understand, I'm just watching with them, like, I don't know either, son. I, I have the ability to go in as a parent and contact the teacher. Mr. Akbar, do you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yeah. So something that I always say at, you know, back-to-school night is be nagging, be, you know, if you think you're being annoying to the teacher, good. You know, like, I would want the exact same thing for my students. This is my community. Like, I want people to advocate for themselves. So if you don't understand something or if you feel like your child isn't getting the services that you think they should be getting, you know, annoy people, ask them, because they only get one chance at this. Now, I know that as teachers, many of us, if not all of us, are working really hard to, to ensure that we do have those recorded lessons or, you know, that we're familiar enough with the technology right now so that when students have questions about it or when we want to use something that's exciting and different to engage them, we can do so. But the biggest thing will be that, you know, Canvas has an app as well. I didn't mention that, but for students and for parents as well for teachers, it's not just something that you have to go to a website. It's, one, you don't have to download a single thing to access Canvas. So if you're at somebody else's house, so if you're at mom's house or if you're at dad's house or grandma's house, you know, for the weekend, you can still go on their computer or their device and access it, which is really important. Secondly, parents, I get the fact that, you know, there is a lot of parents that are working. When you have a chance, you can still go on the app on your phone just to check, hey, what did my kid do today? Or what do they have due tomorrow or the day after, especially for younger kids? There's no replacement for parent advocacy. We can try as much as we want as, as a school board member or as a teacher or as a community member, but, you know, the parent has the most access or the guardian has the most access to the student. So really hope that they'll take that opportunity right now to become familiar with it. If they were disengaged from the system, let's say last year or last month, you know, we have tomorrow and we have this school year. So it's never too late, even if your student's a senior. It's never too late at all.
Absolutely. And, and, Ms. Akbar, I want to take you, this question for you because yourself, being, being a teacher, we've talked about some of the adjustments that have had to be made during this global pandemic, you know, for students and for parents, but also for teachers. Can you just share a little bit about, from your perspective and maybe some of your fellow colleagues, what this situation has been like for you all as you get ready for the new school year?
Yeah. So I think there's no teacher that would rather be any place teaching than in their classroom. So we get, when parents want their students back in school or when students want to be back in school, we get it. You know, we do too. I've had a really tough time adjusting my routine when you're not, just like anyone who's working from home, when you're not getting up, getting dressed and driving to your workplace, you have a lot tougher time keeping up with your routine. Same thing as stepping away from work. You know, it might be 9:00 PM and I'm like, hey, let me, let me do, let me make this activity. You know, this was back in the spring. So it has been tough, I think, for teachers all around. I'm privileged. I don't have a family depending on me, you know, and so I, you know, hats off to those people that are making the considerations of teaching from home while also having their students that are learning from home. So bear with us. While I did say that, you know, annoy your teachers and annoy every single person trying to get the best for your student, but also understand and have that compassion that all of us are going to need to have to understand the various situations that we're in, whether as teachers, whether as, you know, parents or especially our students.
Absolutely. And Vice Chairwoman, throw this final question out for you. And, and Mr. Akbar, you would definitely feel free to chime in. Just talk about some of the things that, issues that students and teachers would deal with. And, and we know that in, during these situations, that there may be students who may be dealing with difficult situations at home. We have seen issues where there may be domestic abuse cases that have risen since the COVID-19 pandemic. And so maybe students who are struggling with talking to someone, you know, one of the things that, the advantages of being in a, in a physical building is that a student can go to a counselor, they can go to their teacher, they can talk to someone. Oh, if there's a student who say, who is dealing with abuse at home, who can they talk to? Whether council services will be available to them of when the school year begins?
So there, we've, we've sort of kept up our mental health services throughout this pandemic. I, you can always reach out to the counselor you know best, because sometimes this is what students do, no matter who is available and who posted, whatever number or service that's out there, you know, they're going to contact the person that they're the most comfortable with. And I would encourage students to do that as well, but we've had our mental health services available to students, I think since as early as late March. All the information, your website, but you're more than also welcome to, to email your counselor. The county also has mental health services that they're providing. There's a lot of hotlines out there, a lot of services at a county level as well. And they're free to students. You don't have to have health insurance or any sort of requirements in order to access those services. And that's going to continue for a foreseeable future. And I, and I also want to remind parents, you know, this specifically, parents and, and students listening, our school counselors are there to help you and assist you, but they're, they're not psychiatrists. They're not trained in that area. That's not their area of expertise. They're there to help you. But they're also there to refer you to more in-depth services if that's needed or to provide helpful suggestions, be there sounding board and a listening ear. But I just want to make sure that that's clear because a lot of people, a lot of our families sometimes assume that our counselors are psychologists, right? So they do provide a little bit of that service, but that's not their area of expertise. They're there for a lot of different counseling needs. We also have social workers available too within our schools. You contact your school. You can get in touch with a social worker. They provide a lot of services and they're a real good turnkey to county services as well. So you can start with us and we'll make sure we get you to the right person and the right service that you need. If it's with us, then it's one-stop shopping. If not, we'll make sure that we walk you through the process.
Appreciate that, Vice Chairwoman.
And I think the key here is also that, you know, the way we engage is going to look different. It's already looking different, the way we engage. I don't have students walking into my classroom and I can tell from the way that they look or if they have their head down that something's up and ask them a question when we have the class change. You know, it might look like that camera's turned off or it might look like that somebody's being unresponsive. Our job as teachers is to be proactive and I think the entire community, education community needs to be proactive in this. We need to be having those conversations like, all right, how do we reach out to those students before there's a crisis, right? Or before they have to send us an email, because we know that everyone's dealing with a number of issues on top of what we're all going through. So I would love to see what, you know, different schools, but also as a county, what we do when it comes to being proactive with our counseling department so that there isn't a difference in services between one school to the other school. To see, you know, what we come up with. But I know that everyone, the counselors that I know, the teachers that I know, we're all working to kind of develop those SOPs right now so that we can, you know, be ready once school starts for our kids.
Right. And I think, I think you bring up a really good point. We all just need to give ourselves some grace because it's a different world that we're living in and we're all doing the best that we can to provide the best services that we can for our, our school families.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to go conclude on, on this, you know, and to talk about regards to the school board. And, you know, many of the labels that you have taken on in what's been an extraordinary, difficult challenge, making sure that, you know, parents, teachers, students and all staff are safe. And so what preparations are being done now so that, say, when come November 9th, if the decision is made to reopen the schools, that students and teachers and staff and parents know that they're going back into a safe facility?
Sure. So we've been working on a lot of physical building projects such as putting up plexiglass and mean, you know, when you walk into a building for our administrators, for front desk receptionists. We've been redesigning, re-changing and updating our nurses' offices. Schools will more than likely have one directional flow for students and hallways. Some of that is, is, is being done right now because we have a, a small group of students that we expect to come in near the beginning of, of the school, school year. Those are our most vulnerable students. So a lot of that has to be done right now. And then there's, you know, some unknown unknowns, right? Until we get into buildings, we really walk the spaces with some kids, some students, discuss best practices. But I'm confident that all of our teachers will have the PPE they need. It'll be up in physical spaces if, if that's a requirement. We will be requiring students to wear masks if that's the need at the time when we make that decision. And I also want parents to understand too, if your student shows up and they don't have a mask, we're going to give you one. Or face covering, I should say, right? But they have the option to wear their own face covering. So if your, your, your student is more comfortable wearing like a neckerchief or the kind that goes up, it looks like, I call it a neck sleeve, right? But it's a face covering. Or, you know, the disposable mask or they have a Scooby-Doo one. You know, it's going to adhere to code of behavior rules. So you don't, you don't want any vulgar things on your mask, your face coverings. Because I know there's someone say, well, you just said I could wear anything. Let me just throw that out there because I have that kid. You know, there's still an expectation that we're going to adhere to those type of guidelines. But we are doing our best to make sure that everything is up to par and as safe as it possibly can be for our students and our, and our, and our teaching staff. Dr. Walt put out a video today, I think, to the staff. I'm not sure if it went out live on our school website or not yet. I haven't had a chance to talk about it. But he's in Benton Elementary School, Middle School, excuse me, he's in Benton, and it shows the new nurse's office. So that we'll, we'll have areas that are quarantined off just in case, right? Because it's better to be overly prepared than underly prepared. And that's what we're trying to do. Because it's important that our students are safe and our staff is safe.
Absolutely. That's the most important thing. And speaking of staff, Mr. Akbar, have you now got a chance to go back into Freedom High School or will you be going back on the beginning of the school year?
Right. So we had a survey come out asking us what our comfort level was or what we would prefer. Even though I'm a French teacher, I assume that most of my instruction will be virtual, as will most teachers. But they asked whether we prefer to work from school or from home. So I know that school administrations are working with their teacher communities to make sure that they're coming up with the solutions that are work the best for, for both and all parties involved. Yeah, I, I, I went back to pick up a yearbook distribution thing. I think that was the last thing that I could kind of hold on to of the class of 2020. But no, I, I long for the, just like everyone else, I long to go back and sit in my classroom and, and, you know, teach from there with students present. So we're all hoping for the best and hoping we get out of this soon and safely.
Absolutely. And, and since you said French class, I might need to sign up for that because I've been trying to take French now for about 40 some odd years. So I need to talk about that.
Well, the good thing is you won't be able to Zoom bomb into my classroom. In case you were trying to come in. But absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. On that note, we just want to say, now, Ms. Akbar, if we just, that's tough for people who, how can they access Canvas one more time? Can you give them the links, please?
Yeah. So if you want to access Canvas, it's already on your, what we call the waffle on your Office 365 account. So if you access your Office 365 account from a desktop, you can just click on that little, it looks like a number pad in the top left-hand corner and Canvas will pop up over there. Or you can just type in PWCS Canvas into Google and it'll take you directly to our county webpage that allows you to access it whether as a parent or as a teacher, which I do frequently, and as a student. So the easiest way is just Googling, as it is with everything in life.
Yeah, absolutely. And Vice Chairwoman Williams, if someone needs to get in touch with the Prince William County School Board, how can they get in touch with you all?
Sure. All of our school board, all of the school board members' information is on the Prince William County Schools website, And you go to the About Us tab and then click School Board. And it'll have a little link that says Members and Information. You, it'll have our phone numbers, our email addresses. You can email or call us individually. Or there's also a link where you can send an email to all board members. If individuals are trying to reach me, I always tell my district members, I don't have a preference if you speak English. If you don't, if another language is your first, just email it to me anyway. I'm honest. Full disclosure, I'm not that great at answering my school board phone and it's hard for me to keep track of, making sure I get people the proper information. So if you shoot me an email, I, I, it can be grammatically correct, not English, put numbers in there, I'll figure it out. We'll work it out. We'll, I'll respond to you. Give me about 24, 48 hours. That's generally how long it takes. Right now, because we're in the pandemic, it may take longer because I'm still catching up. But I will get to you and, you know, you can't bother me. So whatever the question is, my child needs a device, I don't know when school starts. How do I get internet? I, I didn't understand X, Y and Z. What school is my child? Anything. Feel free to email me. And like I said, it doesn't have to be in English. It could be in any language. Google Translate is a wonderful thing and we have staff members that help me. So I don't, I don't want anyone to feel that because English isn't their first language or they can't write grammatically correct or they have issues, that that should stop them from reaching out to their elected official. It absolutely should not be. Your tax dollars and the services that we provide are here for everyone, regardless of your level of communication. So please don't hesitate. Reach out.
Absolutely. And for our parents, students, teachers, staff, and for everyone, I hope that you really got a lot tonight from this conversation and get you prepared, you know, back to school 101. This was a great time of orientation and answering all the questions. And we hope we were able to alleviate any concerns you might have as we get ready for the new school year. I'm Mr. J.K. Akbar of Freedom High School, Vice Chairwoman Lori Williams of Prince William County School Board. Thank you all so much for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for having me on.
Hey, our pleasure. And I look forward to it. And so I will be doing this again as the school year progresses and then as other questions come up as well. And for those who watched on Facebook tonight, we thank you all so much for this time. I'm John Reed. You can catch him at www.pdrperspective.com and we look forward to talking to you all next time. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
All right. Thank you all so much for that. That was incredible.